Good evening. I'd like to call the Ordinance Committee into session. Tonight, we have two items on the agenda. 2023-118, the Ordinance Zoning and Amending Chapter 375, Zoning Section 8.0 for Special District, Adding Section 8.6, MBTA Community Multi-Family Overlay District for Compliance with Mass. General Law 48, Section 3A, Multi-Family Zoning Required for MBTA Communities, and 2023-119 Order for the Land Disposition Agreement over at the former Ross lot. Before I begin, I'd like to read the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to the Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged as impermissible. Jen, could you call out the role, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Devine.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Leanne.
Counselor Mahoney.
Counselor Farnum.
Chairman McCaffrey.
Present.
Six members of the form.
Thank you. I think we were downstairs earlier for a very productive Planning Board meeting, and I think Mr. Timmons, if I don't have this wrong, you'll be leading off again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the council. What our presentation type will be that I'm going to give you a bit of an overview. This body is a little more familiar with what's going on than the Planning Board had been because they were presented with a lot of the work that occurred over the summer. But you may recall that we were in front of you last May after our action plan that had been approved by DHCD. We gave you an overview of what was to happen, and you may recall the, or I recall certainly, the sage comments of my ward counselor, Counselor Kane, who thought that there was a disconnect between the fact that we're looking to create residential housing because of an MBTA that's not really terribly functional and that it's a little unfair to the community, or the communities, plural, that are serviced by the MBTA to have this housing measure thrust upon them when they don't have a functional MBTA to back it up. So with that criticism in mind, which I think is a very valid one, I'll just remind the body that this is an amendment to Chapter 48, the zoning act, which is a statute. And, you know, we're complying with Section 3A in enacting an ordinance, Section 8.6, which is before you and will be before you for approval next week. By way of a bit of background, in 2016 in North Quincy, we passed a transit-oriented district, Section 8.5 of our zoning ordinance to allow for the project that now exists down there over the North Quincy T. That ordinance was the precursor or what's before you tonight. But the issue with our Section 8.5, and I'm reading directly from it, is that the Purpose Section of 8.5 states that the purpose that Quincy had in enacting Section 8.5 was to provide a greater opportunity for the construction of quality developments and secondarily to encourage mixed-use development in the area that we had designated as the TOD district. The issue with Section 3A is it's got a very different purpose and a far more limited one. Section 3A provides that the purpose of the MBTA Communities' Multi-Family Overlay District is to allow multifamily housing as of right. So the focus is on housing opportunity and as of right, which means that the ability to limit what goes in in this new district is very, very restricted. The point of that is, on the statewide level, there had, there's long been frustration with the fact that there's such a great demand in our region for housing, and yet a lot of communities are freezing out housing opportunities. When Governor Baker was in Quincy shortly after enacting Section 3A, which was enacted in 2021, Governor Baker was talking about a community in the South Shore that has two commuter rail stations in it and 30,000-square-foot zoning requirements for new housing. He found that to be very frustrating because it was a great disincentive to creating housing opportunities, yet they had this commuter rail that could easily accommodate a type of new housing that 3A is designed to kind of create. So with that in mind, the state moved forward trying to change how things work in our region. You probably read in the paper the other night that the town of Milton finally passed their transit, well, MBTA overlay district. We are looking to do what is mandated under Section 3A. And just to be clear, we talked about this before, we're creating an overlay district. And what that means is, this is not a mandate to build housing. It's not a mandate to the city to develop the infrastructure that would allow for housing. What it is, is essentially an ordinance that eliminates restrictions to multifamily housing in order to provide for opportunities in areas where people, developers, folks who are current owners of real estate may wish to create real estate that is housing-focused. So with that in mind, I have worked almost exclusively following what, I still refer to it as DHCD. It's recently been renamed. But there's a MBTA Communities' Sample Ordinance. And the ordinance that we drafted here, which would go into our zoning code as Section 8.6, is, it totally follows what the state has recommended. And the reason we're doing that, there was a misconception back in the spring that we were already, we were covered under this new Section 3A because we had a TOD district, what we had done down in North Quincy. But the problem with that district, as I read earlier, our Section 8.5 says that the purpose was to create mixed-use opportunities. If you read Section 8.6, it's targeted. It's very specific. And it's about real estate that is multifamily housing. So that's what we're looking at here. I was going to have Mr. Stevens go through the PowerPoint, but I just wanted to remind the body what we're dealing with here and that this is really kind of the conclusion of a process that went on beginning last May. We had a council vote and an order where it was introduced on May 30th that we were to revise our ordinance consistent with Section 3A. That has happened. That's what's before you. And Mr. Stevens will explain the work that the Planning Department did in identifying a district, then modifying that one district at Quincy Adams and incorporating something down in North Quincy, which we think is going to be a smooth transition. And again, this came up at the end of the hearing and before the Planning Department, Planning Board, rather. It's, I can't emphasize enough, this is simply creating an overlay district that allows for development if private property owners, private developers wish to do it. It's, the intent of this zoning ordinance is to incentivize the development of multifamily housing when development occurs in Quincy. So with that, I'll let Mr. Stevens go over the presentation, which is pretty brief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Solicitor Timmons. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, City Councilors. So Jim had a great introduction on the law and some of the pre-work that his office has done. We've been looking at this since the beginning, too. And at one point, and I'd want to relay this to all the councilors, is the department's belief that a lot of what we do in Quincy Center in our existing multifamily zones, Res B, Res C, the business districts, that's already getting to the unit density that the state is looking for here. The struggle is, a lot of that is, we trigger special permits or variants are required. And the state is mandating by right development. So by right means there's no discretionary approvals, which is yes or no's. We still hold the ability, and the Planning Board will have that ability, to perform site plan reviews on projects. So that'll review all the technical documents. We'll still deploy our independent peer review processes. So this isn't Wild West by right development. But if I could just take a few steps back a little bit of how we developed our approach to this is the MBTA legislation classifies different communities as different types. Quincy with our subway stations, we're a rapid transit community. So as it goes to the timeline, we have a December 31 deadline to comply with this district, and we have higher density requirements. Now, prior to the May, the city did have to file an MBTA zoning action plan. We did do that in January. Soon thereafter, the state released what it's called as a compliance model. Now, when we filed the action plan, we did provide a lot of the city's GIS data layers into the state. They incorporated the information from Quincy and all the MBTA communities in creating this compliance model. So a lot of it is predetermined by the state modeling. So we had to put in some inputs to get some densities. But a number I think all of us have seen is the modeling and the city's density requires a zoning district to create upwards of 11,752 units. So that's the target we're looking for. When this model first came out, and you could kind of see that one image, looks a lot like Quincy Center. We were hopeful there might have been a side door or two because we believe, again, the city is generating the units that the state's looking for. There is no side door. This is law. You can't really get, it required changes to the law. But we tested Quincy Center under the current Quincy Center zoning districts, which is very dense. And as it stands today, the district created over 15,000 units. But that's done by special permit. That's also done in large part through the city Quincy Center Urban Renewal Plan. So we sort of backed off of looking at that station. We have four stations. I go back to, as Solicitor Timmons mentioned, 2016, the adoption of the North Quincy TOD zoning district. We looked at that. The Abbey was built, but there's not a whole lot of room around that station. Then we looked at Wallaston. I think, as this board knows, we did approve the Wallaston Urban Renewal Plan. That is enough of a business village that it needed more than just zoning. Needed additional tools. So we mimicked that area after our successes with Quincy Center. So now we're down into the Quincy Adams Station. And this body, I believe a few years ago, approved a zoning amendment that extended that North Quincy TOD district to a small area off of Center Street to encourage development. So we started to take a closer look at that area. And I'll come back to the slide. These are the two districts. But I slid this slide in, and it's an area of South Quincy. I want to point you guys, you folks, to the lighter green area, sort of right in the center of the map. That's industrial A zoning. Sort of off to the left is Center Street. Then it goes up Bergen Parkway and then comes in off of Liberty Street. So we know that industrial zones prohibit residential housing. We've seen residential housing come into this area. Folks are relocating some of those industrial uses because it needs a lot of land area because the land values are so high in Quincy. We've had, obviously, the DECO development has come forward. We've had a number of other developments. Elevation is a big one. The big triangle zoning district, that blue area is industrial B. That's the large majority of Crown Colony. We did not include that in this area. We don't need it for the density. So we've stuck right to that lime green area. As we took a closer look at that area, we did recognize a number of existing streets that had a lot of low-density residential, single-family, two-family, three-family. And we started to talk to Counselor Devine, who recognized that same thing. He said, you guys, you got to protect those existing neighborhoods. So we did with the compliance model. We went ahead and we removed a number of streets. Liberty Street, a portion of Topman Street, we took out of the proposed zoning overlay. We removed the residential portion of Penn Street. We also took out Quincy Street and a portion of Brook Road. And once we did that and ran the model, we got numbers, unit numbers that were around 10,000. So it was a little short for what the state was looking for. So that's when we gazed back up to North Quincy and, you know, started to look at those three office buildings across the tracks from the Abbey. That'd be 100, 150, and 200 Newport Ave Extension. And said, you know, with the success of the Abbey in all likelihood, would probably see some mixed-use development right there on the station. So we went ahead and added that district. And so what we're proposing is two districts combined would generate about 13,985 units, according to the state's model. So that's the piece that we assisted the Solicitor Timmons with. He was the lead with creating the council, in the zoning amendment, Council Order 2023-118. Now, the modeling, and we had to do a number of different tests with density requirements. This is where we settled on. It's 10,000 square foot is the minimum lot size. Lot area per dwelling unit is 325 square feet. That 325 is what's already on the books for the existing North Quincy zoning overlay, which is Section 8.5. A couple of examples of existing square feet per dwelling unit. The DECO building is 180 units at 100,000 square feet. That's about a 558 square foot per dwelling unit. The Abbey at North Quincy is 610 units on 303,000 square feet. That's a 497 square feet per dwelling unit. The permitted but not built 269 Center Street, that's 304 units on 120,000 square feet. That's 397 per dwelling unit. So that's our density element. And then we have maximum building height of eight stories. And then the by right question. So when we went to the existing TOD zoning overlay as well as the Quincy Center zoning district, we did away with setbacks with the hope of working with private developers on enhancing sidewalks, widening sidewalks, creating a little bit of more public realm. So having the by right, we felt that that shouldn't be done. We should probably have a minimum setback. So we settled on, you know, our good practice and good experience as a department, supporting the site plan review, and went with 10-foot setbacks on either side. I would note that prior to this meeting, we did meet with the board. One of the things we've done with these aggressive zoning districts is the board, the department will assist the board in adopting design guidelines to help further kind of clarify the city's vision for these types of redevelopments, for the sidewalks and different design elements. And we were able to get the board to support in their report that, you know, they'll be more than happy to move forward and update those existing guidelines we have for the TOD zoning. And we'll have them incorporated for this new zoning district as well. This is, you know, part of that as-of-right zoning. You know, site plan review can still occur, and we will still plan to follow through on that commitment with the Planning Board. The mandatory mixed-use development, Solicitor Timmons mentioned this. At the beginning, this legislation started as residential only. And that was, I mentioned, we ran the model on Quincy Center. We're mixed-use in Quincy Center. Late, earlier this fall, the state did open up and allow some mixed-use. They didn't ban it as straight multifamily. I thought that was a good take. But this is, as Solicitor Timmons mentioned, it's a multifamily zoning requirement or purpose for the zoning district. Obviously, energy efficiency. Yeah, there's some other elements there. Some more important clarifications. Housing be built. It doesn't supersede wetlands. Let me see. Some of the densities. Oh, one of the big questions that's come up and, because there's been a number of workshops over the summer, is, you know, we have these zoning areas. Does this compel the city to now update roads and infrastructure? And this law does not compel that. So that, I think, is a key element of that. Next steps. Solicitor Timmons, I don't know if you want to get the mic back or... So we're here today, obviously. This body manages the zoning. Planning Board did its public hearing earlier this evening. We'll issue your report in the next couple of days. We're here tonight to, obviously, have some dialogue and some discussions with this group on this zoning. And we're here to answer some questions.
Thanks, Rob.
Right, thank you.
And just for everyone, FYI, I mean, no vote tonight. I want to open it up to my colleagues for questions. Monday at the council meeting, we'll have a public hearing. Jen's got the schedule that will come out, and we'll move on it on Monday evening. But I want to open it up to anyone who has any questions on anything that Mr. Timmons or Mr. Stevens has thrown out or any questions for anyone who is in the audience that might come up and have a good answer for it. So is anybody... No, you're good. Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment. And as you were going through your presentation, I got to thinking a lot about zoning when you started saying zoning. It's been a hot topic in the city, rezoning. The Section 3A guidelines, I know this is kind of mandated and put onto us to proceed in doing, obviously, some multifamily zoning. And when I look in the downtown and I look in these T-stations and MBTAs, North Quincy, Wallaston, Quincy Center, Quincy Adams, downtown here, I think of this could be more dense areas to build, to construct multi-units and all that stuff. However, there is a downside of this. We have a very big cut-through city. And just going over the Ford River Bridge and seeing all the folks from Weymouth and Hingham and Situate and Cohasset and all the different Amazon trucks, FedEx, UPS, let's throw them all in the mix, coming through our city constantly. We do have some streets and peninsulas in the city that creates a lot more traffic. And what do I need to do in relay of all this is, and I'm glad we're here. They've got some ward counselors here, is to retake a look, and I know Counselor Devine was just spoken about, about, okay, these streets don't look good. Let's keep these Res A or... We need to protect our residential As. And we need to probably expand some of that Res As in certain areas of the city. And this is, you know, not only to you guys, it's also to my fellow ward counselors, is to retake a look at some of the areas throughout the city where we're going to build in certain sections of the city. I encourage that. However, because of the sake of the traffic and the congestion and the cut-through city that we have, and we can't, we don't have a lot of control over it, we need to really protect a lot of our single-family homeowners that are living in the Res As, but maybe switching some of that, rezoning some of those areas into more Res A. So it's just basically a comment. I know we're dictated with, we live right next to Boston. I fully understand that. But we are definitely a cut-through city. And now with the holidays around, you could see when you get in that vehicle and you're out there and you're driving around the city, takes a little longer at certain times. And then throw weather on top of it. If it rains, or if it snows, or any type of precipitation, it's slowing down everyone in the city. And these are people that work outside of the city that have to commute. For instance, myself. And I, you know, some folks that go after to Boston, they have to go over the Nippon's Bridge. And it's backed up. And we all have to, we all, we all as counselors have responsibility for also the residents that live here. And just coming off an election, I know it was a hot topic in the city about rezoning. Rezoning, it kept on coming up. It kept on coming up. Each couple doors we were getting to, rezoning. How are we going to protect it? Traffic. So I think this stuff is really good, and I'm encouraging a lot of the nice development throughout the city for, you know, mixed use and the multi-units and stuff. However, we do have to protect our homeowners, the single families. And some of the construction that's happening in those particular areas needs to be, I think we need to take a quick, a hard look at it as a body, as ward counselors, as an at-large, to help and work with the ward counselors. I like the fact that Counselor Devine was very big on, well, these streets, we need to protect these streets. I'm getting, you know, I see him at ZBA. I see him at Planning all the time. He's there almost every meeting. And he's hearing it in his ear about the residents. And I know going into this next phase, this will probably be our last committee meeting, and we are for the last meeting on Monday. But going into the new year 2024, I know it's a hot topic that rezoning is going to definitely be back up here. And you folks are going to probably be back up here in the council chambers talking about how do we protect our single families, our homeowners that have been kind of getting at us for the last few years. So it's a good eye-opener to, I love your presentation. Thank you for coming in. And I think we've done a good job in general over the last few years. You know, North Quincy Development. The thing is coming along really well. The Hospital Hill Development, I mean, that really, I mean, that's a beautiful-looking building over there. I've talked to some of the other developers about possibly going over to Penn and maybe taking that orange down and maybe putting a different color up right across from Quincy Adams T-Site. Do you think you could do that, by the way? Do you think you could maybe make a recommendation to the person who built that building? Say, you know what? Can you go out and can you change that color orange into something else? That's my only question I have. Is there any alterations that we can do as a body here to fix some of the buildings? Because that almost looks like it comes out of Miami Vice, like down South Beach or something. You know what I mean? You come into the city. Everything else looks nice and beautiful. And you come into the Quincy Adams T and you look over on the left and there's that orange, ugly-looking, 1980 look. Is there any way that we can fix that or we can mitigate that by putting a different color up there?
Planting some more trees. You know, the facade, there's limits to how much we can mandate on facades.
On the color?
Yeah, on the outside of the facades.
Is there anything that we can...
A lot of what we do is site, you know? So water, sewer, you know, traffic, the subsurface.
Is there anything we can do on the outside to kind of mask that, kind of camouflage it, maybe, as we construct?
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
MBTA is right next door. Is there anything that we can do on their end to say, hey, listen, let's do something on their end? But thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to piggyback a little bit off of the rezoning and looking forward into the new year of maybe talking with the council up here and having more discussions about it. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Devine.
Thank you very much for your presentation. This is the second publicly one I've heard and third within 24 hours when I was in your office the other day, yesterday. I really appreciate that you guys have accommodated all my requests. I know it seems very scary to a lot of people, but this is, some people, but this is a law that we have to meet. And when I was sworn in, I had to swear that I would obey the laws of the Commonwealth. So we need to make sure that we follow the rules and take care of these things properly. But at the same time, your whole department and city solicitor and the city itself have worked very closely with me all summer. And I appreciate that because, is it possible to bring back up the circle there again with the overlay? to bring back up the circle there again with the overlay? Yeah, so, there's a big section in there, a green section on our West Quincy Zone. That's a whole area between Center, Liberty, and I believe Water Street. It's, they're all single-family homes. I remember very old, these people have lived there a long time. We've protected all them, and I also asked to, Penn Street's a small street, and there's also a lot of nice single and two-family homes there. They're all tucked in, you know, behind BJ's Gas. And then on Totman Street, there's about seven houses. On Liberty, it extends across Center Street, and there's about 20-plus houses there. You guys carved all those out and to make sure that they're protected, that they're not in that zone. I believe it must have been very hard, and, but that's one of the things I was asking for, I heard you mention it earlier, so I appreciate that, and I think our constituents will too. So, going forward, this is something that, not, I don't, I know it's, there's a lot of things that are going to change, but at the same time, a lot of these setbacks and these rules are very similar to ones that we already have existing also. So, you've done a really good job of making sure that we still have some type of ability to control what's going to happen. Like you said, we're not a Wild West thing here, so to, your presentation, I think, was very clear, but I want to make sure people know too that we're watching out for them. And, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ingeronico?
Appreciate the presentation. I had mentioned this in our meeting back in May, and I feel like it bears repeating again, just with the requirements that we're giving, it bothers me that the state is requiring us to build, you know, over 10,000 units of housing, but as part of that, we can't make mixed-use by right a part of it. You know, the whole goal, from the state's perspective, is build more housing, get folks to use transit more, decrease on, you know, car-vehicle traffic throughout the city, you know, throughout the state, really. But we need to build all that housing, but then we can't require that these people have a third place to go, you know, to get a bite to eat, or just do something after work or on their weekends. So, the whole purpose was to cut down on traffic, but now we'll have to build, not have to, we have to have capacity to build, you know, upwards of 10,000 units, but then not have somewhere else for them to go. So we'll have to go across the city or go somewhere else and just add to more traffic in the first place. So I would like to see the council moving forward to push ahead with asking the state to maybe even allow a percentage of this overlay district to be mixed-use by right, even if it's just like 10% or 25% of those units to be mixed-use would be great. But again, it's a state requirement, state law, and if we don't comply again by the end of the year, then we miss out on being able to apply for Mass Works Grants, Housing Choice Grant Program, or, you know, local capital project funds. So, it is something that we have to do, and I think that the Planning Department did the best they could with the proposal before us, and I do want to give a shout-out again to Counselor Devine for his partnership with them on, with you guys on figuring that out. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kane?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, I, you know, thank you again for all your work. I don't have much more to say than I already have. I think this is crazy still, that we're being forced to, you know, put this in places where other cities have not fulfilled their obligations from the get-go. But I also, you know, just hearing my colleagues' comments, you know, I don't want to lead people to believe that when we do, at a certain point in time, look at future rezoning for the city, that, you know, we're not going back in time. So we're not going to a place where Residence A will be more stock, you know, in the city. It doesn't seem like people are building that stock, especially in places like Quincy. So, I just don't want people to think that that's what's going to happen. The neighborhoods will be protected as best they can, but we probably won't be heading in that direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harris?
I just want to mention that the fact that my concern, one of my concerns is, obviously, and we have things that we've put in place, this council has, as far as the short-term rental situation. So, obviously, I'd like to see more involvement and education with our Inspectional Services folks to be involved, because if this moves forward, we're going to be right on top of the game instead of being behind the game, which it seems sometimes we are, which is natural for a major city. Again, one of the things that, one of my major problems, I have, you know, I've already gone through the North Quincy project, but the other areas of my ward, we're dealing with, you know, when we talk about changing zoning and rez A is, should be protected, people have worked their whole lifetime to live and want to stay where they are and live in a situation where they're not, you know, subject to abuse, disruption, unnecessary disruption, abusive disruption. So, and I've, and I know the Inspectional Services has worked pretty good with me on that, and across the whole city. But our Residence A, they're the folks that are taking the brunt of our taxes, and especially in my ward, as was pointed out three times at the last council meeting, which was, I've heard very much about. So, that's all I really have to say about that, but we have to protect our folks in Residence A, plain and simple as that. That's my stance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just a couple of quick questions, Rob. I see that on page two, 161 acres.
Yes.
Was that, that's a number we got to somehow with the formulas to end up in...
Yeah, so the model of both districts combined is 160 acres.
And when I was doing a little homework on my own, I, it looked like they had proposed that each municipality had one, would have one district. Did we, is that something that I had misread? You know, that each...
Perhaps, there's multiple districts, but it could be...
But we could take the 161 and have...
Well, we got four stations.
Right.
So that's, you know, by its own nature, we could have four districts, potentially. I think Newton proposed like eight districts, the city of Newton. Braintree's got two districts, one covering the commuter rail station in the Landing, and then they also have their subway station at the Red Line. So that was Braintree's proposal. So multiple districts was accounted for.
Right. And I know, you know, we have a great relationship with the Solicitor's Office and with the Planning Department. So, you know, this is, as we, as Jim Timmons had mentioned earlier, you know, it's not a mandate, it's a, it's another layer of zoning or planning for the Quincy City, for the city of Quincy to swallow and work it into their protocol. And I know that, you know, down the road, as we go along, the planning between the Planning Department and the Ward Counselor, you know, I know there'll be a, because it seems like it's all planning, and then, you know, planning gets it, we don't go into our usual zoning because it's by right, and then planning would touch base with the Ward Counselor. In this case, it would be Counselor Devine over in West Quincy, and there'll be a process, you know? And I know, I'm way early on that, you know, on that, but I know that that would probably be something to make sure that that Ward Counselor's way out in front of something that shows up in y'all lap.
I would expect that to continue, because the Planning Board will still be asked to do site plan review, the technical review of these applications. And I think all the ward counselors that have been with us on projects know there's a lot up front that we count on, that relationship with the ward counselors, to get some of that neighborhood feedback, so we can try to, you know, articulate the city's concerns during the site plan review process. The trouble with site plan review is you can't say no at the end of the day if that project meets all of your guidelines or all of the density requirements.
Right.
Whereas a special permit, even at the end of the day, there still could be a no vote on a special permit application.
Right, and I think it's just the, when folks saw the, I know that I've spoken to a few folks who had said, you know, asked me about this particular ordinance tonight, and the way, you know, it's, and it's the way it's written with Mass General Laws, it jumps out at you like, all of a sudden, the bulldozer's going to hit in West Quincy, and things are going to start. And as Jim had mentioned earlier on, it's not a mandate, it's just another layer, another application to put into the mix on our planning and zoning. And I just want to make that clear to everyone, that, you know, it'll still be, there'll still be a very formal process all the way from planning all the way down, which I know would happen. But just want to throw that out again, because a lot of people read that and all of a sudden said, gee, they're going into those areas, and they're going to do a number on the areas, and they're going to put multifamilies in there, and there'll be controls, and we know that. We know that up here. But a lot of folks, sometimes, they read into it, and it gets them going down the wrong path.
Yeah, and I did maybe hear a fear that the state is building the housing. That is not the case at all. This is a regulatory thing. What gets developed will be up to the private landowners in these areas, as it is today.
Right, thanks.
This is, it's a regulatory. I've just heard, is the state going to come in and force housing? There's nothing to that.
Right.
This is simply a local regulation. In fact, the state actually owns zoning under Mass General Law 40A, and there's limitations to what all of the municipalities, including Quincy, can do with its zoning. It still owns, you know, the state still controls it, and that's why there's, you know, this is law, and we're, you know, trying to make that effort to comply.
Right, thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Good on questions. This is going to stay in committee. As I said, on Monday night, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll deal with it Monday night at the City Council. I want to thank you and Mr. Timmons, Mr. Fatsies, the whole team. It was, it's very clear on what we have here. It just will be tweaked as we go along down the road with it, of course. So, thanks, Rob.
Great, and I'll just leave you with one thing. Under the Planning Department realm on the website, we do have a category where we're putting up a lot of our maps in this presentation. Folks in the community want to take a closer look, they can find it there under the Planning Department under our Planning Board Case list. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Okay. With that, I will move on to next item on the agenda, 2023-119, CLDA. I don't know who's coming up first.
Well, thank you for your time this evening, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, counselors. Not only thank you for your time, but thank you for your partnership in the downtown redevelopment process. Over 15 years of progress. It is with great pleasure that the team is here tonight to present you the next step in this progress. The land disposition agreement for a parcel of land that includes a portion of the area formerly known as the Ross Parking Garage Site, south of what is now called the General's This agreement is the second step in what is a three-step process for this body. The first was land dissemblage, the final piece of land dissemblage, of which was approved by the council last month, was the eminent domain taking of 119 parkingway, or what we call it the IHOP. As previous LDAs, as like previous LDAs, it's a real estate agreement that sets a framework for private development, doesn't close until a number of conditions are met. This allows the process to move forward to the third step, which is a full and thorough review process via the Planning Board, and importantly for this body, leads to the future financial appropriation request necessary to meet the public infrastructure requirements, including parking, to make the project a reality. The team expects those plans to be brought before the council in early 2024. In short, this is not the council's only bite at the apple, but tonight, we're talking about land. I'm going to briefly walk through the key elements of the agreement, and then DJ McKinnon of Atlantic Development, the selected master developer for the private portion of this plan, will outline the preliminary scope of the project as it exists today. I'll just note again that the LDA sets the framework with detail on the specific portions of the project to come later via the appropriation request that I mentioned, and the certificate of consistency process under our urban renewal plan, which the Planning Board participates greatly with. With us tonight, we also have our legal team to answer any questions you may have on the details of this agreement, which I will say is almost identical in substance to the previously approved LDAs. You have a copy of the appraisal that was the basis of the purchase price included in the LDA, and Joe Shea of Granite City Partners is here to answer any questions you may have on the engineering, easements, utilities, other land matters which are discussed in the appraisal. First, I'll describe the actual parcel subject to disposition, which you will remember from the December 4 meeting, the city assembled all of our land and rights of way, and this LDA creates the portion of land where the private redevelopment will consist of ground-floor retail and residential above. Mr. McKinnon will provide detail on the redevelopment. The key piece of any real estate transaction is, of course, the price, and according to the appraisal, the purchase price is proposed at $7.3 million. Some of the other key elements of the LDA include the following, and I just want to note that it, all of this has to be done before we can actually close on it. The requirement that any proposed project meets the city's urban renewal standards via the COC process. A mixed-use private development, including housing and 20,000 square feet of retail, which creates a flagship corner and block as part of our redevelopment. Requires evidence that the developer has the financial resources to proceed with the project. Of course, a $7.3 million purchase price, an outside closing date of 2026, and then the city construction of a parking facility and future parking lease for a preset number of spaces, similar to the Kilroy Square projects, including surface-level parking for the major retail component, spaces that parking, excuse me, shopping carts can be easily wheeled to. Now, that's the nuts and bolts of this agreement and the land, so I'd like to now hand it over to the designated developer, DJ McKinnon, to provide preliminary details of the proposed redevelopment, and we will be here to answer questions after Mr. McKinnon's presentation to you. Mr. McKinnon?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Planning Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm DJ McKinnon from Atlantic Development, pleased to be here tonight. You know, we find this proposal, this site, from our standpoint, to be a great location in the city, but also, we want to first recognize all the hard work that's taken place before us. You know, as Mr. Fatsies mentioned, the city's been working on the downtown for over 15 years now, gone through extensive planning. You've appropriated significant funding for infrastructure, for other activities to prepare these areas for development. You've gone ahead and installed a significant amount of infrastructure. Uh, you've gone ahead and installed a significant amount of infrastructure. Uh, you put zoning in place to allow for these developments, uh, and you also put special legislation in place to allow for these transactions. So that's all the precursor to what we do, which is then we come to develop. But I really, I I feel like we're kind of the tail end of it in this one with all the hard work you've done. So thank you for uh creating this template. Um, and, you know, now we're at the point where we can advance our proposal, which we feel meets many of the city needs. Uh, we're proposing a mixed-use development with specialty grocery uh at ground level along with other uh retail, housing component, uh, and the city parking garage. In addition to that, um, obviously now is the opportunity for the city for us to pay, you know, significant real estate taxes and provide that revenue to the city. As Director mentioned, we are using a template that's been used before. Uh, this one is actually pretty similar to the O'Connell development in that they built a residential building with some commercial space at ground level. They also built the Kilroy Garage. Uh, in their case, they were, uh, you know, ahead of a lot of the other downtown development, were pioneering, and there was a a special tax deal. In our case, there's, there is no tax deal. We pay full taxes uh as soon as the development uh is in place. So with that, we can walk through the plans. Uh, if, why don't we, okay, yeah, the one we just had, we'll just back this up. So this is just another picture of the aerial. It shows the existing area with the IHOP building. You can see the roof there, uh, the parking lot below it. That smaller parking lot on the right is where the uh, is where the ice skating rink is right now. So now moving on. Um, this plan reflects one change to the infrastructure that's underway, which is the traffic signal, uh, which is at the end of parkingway, is being, is now shown shifted down to McConville. That's work that the city has underway, so we wanted to make sure we showed that on the plan. And then with this plan, we have McConville on the bottom, and uh the larger bo- retail box that you see there is a specialty grocery store with two smaller boxes to the left, those are for the restaurant, proposed restaurant and bank. Uh, to access the hot site, we come in off of McConville with the main entrance drive to go both in and out. As you come into the site, you'll have ground-level parking that will work for the, for the retail space. So as you drive in, you've got parking. That side of the site will facilitate use of shopping carriages and those type of things that we need for the, for the uh specialty grocer. Um, we also have a designated area for loading that is safe and out of the way. Um, you'll also use that entrance if you're going up to the uh city parking garage. On this plan, the city parking garage is shown in in red. It's those structural elements that come down to ground level. Um, you'd be able to drive up the ramp and then traverse throughout the garage for approximately 800 parking spaces uh that'll be available in the garage. The garage will have its pedestrian entrance off of uh the uh General Dunford Drive side. It's that appendage on the right side of the plan, which would provide for, you know, elevators, stairways, and so forth, so people could come down from the garage and be right on General Dunford Bridge to walk, you know, in and out of the city. Um, in addition to that, we also have a residential entrance, uh, which is right on the corner of General Dunford Drive in McConville, just opposite the uh fountain that would allow for the residential entrance, and then from there go up. Uh, above this level is six additional stories of uh of residential housing for the approximately 300 apartments. But we'll move on to the next plan. Uh, this is probably a little bit easier way to understand the development. Uh, if you were standing in the parking lot of the uh Beth Israel Urgent Care and looking across what is today a parking lot, at ground level, we would have, we're showing the traffic signal, which uh is being relocated, uh, and then at ground level, we have the commercial space. Try to make that more prominent with a little bit different look, have that stand out for the, you know, we'll likely have the corner restaurant, bank, and then our specialty grocer um is, has an entrance for pedestrians along McConville, uh, just a little bit further down. This is now ground floor of the building again with the specialty grocer loading. This is starting to show where the stairways, elevators, things like that are located, uh, and then the parking area uh for people at ground level. Next would be the podium level, kind of the first level of residential, uh, an ample amount of amenities. Uh, we have open areas for courtyards. Um, large white box that you see on the top is the parking garage itself. And as you can see, we have two sides of the parking garage. We have it, we're butting it with the, with the residential structure. And then those floors continue up, uh, third through seventh floor, uh, kind of a similar pattern with the open courtyards. And then we get to the very top. Uh, we're proposing a roof deck on top of the garage that would be available for the residential um as well. And then moving on to the next plan, this is just a a portion of the garage plan. It shows that uh lower right-hand section of that plan is actually the ramp that brings you up into the garage. And then as you go up, you turn 90 degrees, and uh then you start to go up the garage itself, which has a slope. The slope in the garage to go to the very, to the different levels occurs along the MBTA tracks. If we jump to the next one, Joe, and then this is a typical floor plate of the garage. Um, so we have a little over 100 spaces per floor, and that continues up for uh for eight levels. Uh, this is sort of a uh cross-section showing the garage from the T-track side, uh, where you can see the slope take place. The next, uh, there's a rendering that would be from kind of the fountain area on McConville, looking back. Um, what we're showing here is the frontage for the specialty grocer along um, along McConville on the left. Uh, we then have the uh entrance to drive uh into the building, uh, where that white van is located. Just to the immediate left of that, uh, is a section of the building that shields uh some of the back of the house, the loading generators, things like that. Uh, but then we show the residential above. And now we're back to the original rendering that we had uh from the start. That's kind of the overview of the development. Uh, happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thanks, DJ. Questions, colleagues? Any questions on Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. DJ, good to see you tonight. Um, thank you for coming in for your presentation. Um, good to see Bill Gary in the, in the audience. Um, I was thinking back when I first got elected in 2015 and 2016, Wester Chestnut was just being built. And um LBC hasn't come to the table yet, O'Connell hasn't come to the table yet, and now you have developments of uh One Chestnut Place, Nova Suites. It kind of blends in. We had a nice new parking garage with shared parking that works for the restaurants and the business owners in the downtown on that side. And then the Galvins did their part with the nice condominiums that are right in this area, right across the street from this particular site. And uh we had the Ross Garage. We took that down. It's a Ross lot, and now we made the General's Bridge. We had all the infrastructure improvements. I know you spoke about having the proper zoning in place, having infrastructure, a pro after, proactive approach, and then the legislation, special legislation in place um that you're going to pay taxes and you're going to put something nice in. It's good to to work with somebody that we've worked with in the past. I know when we talked about the North Quincy site, I talked about possibly getting a target, and you went out and you found us a target. Um, we talked offline about how you can just pull up and order some stuff online. They'll come out, put your groceries slash merchandise inside your vehicle. Um, the vision is there. We can see it now. We can touch it. We can feel it. It's tangible over here on the one side of the, of the downtown. And now the Ross lot, the general bridge area is now the next segment. And uh it's good to see you guys in here before the new year, and we could hopefully move this forward um in the next phase of of redeveloping this, this side of the Ross lot side, doing a proper parking garage, um, and allowing uh obviously Fox Rock to come to the table on their end, on the other side of the dridge, the General's Bridge, I, that mean. Um, but it's all little pieces of the puzzle, and um we're doing it parcel by parcel, and um it's good to see a nice-looking development in front of me that should, will possibly be built. And um I believe in what you believe in for yourself, so hopefully this will be the exact measurements and everything. Um, if this was to move forward, what do you look at for a possible build-out timeframe? How, how long is this going to, I mean, this is a LDA, but how long is this going to take, this process?
Ideally, ideally, we'd like to get started uh before next summer on physical construction. So um we're, we've met with a preliminary meeting with the planning board uh so far. We're preparing plans to file uh with the planning board right after the first of the year and uh have been working, you know, very diligently on all our due diligence, all our other items that have to come forward. So our plan would be to start, um, you know, hopefully before next summer with physical construction. Uh, would like to have the specialty grocer open within kind of a 12 to 18-month period after that, uh, and then residential would open, you know, kind of in phases following that. So move it right along.
The parking garage, um, I know this, this is the idea for this particular parcel side. Are you, do you have an idea of how many parking spots will be in this parking garage, what you talked about?
Yes, uh, approximately 800.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know there's going to be other development. Do you think that will be enough on the Ross side? Is that a question for anybody else? That this parking garage of 800 uni, uh, 800 parking spaces will be enough for that particular section? I would say on the Ross side.
Let me, uh, if, yeah, that would be great.
For a sec. Thank you. Through you to Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Counselor. Um, the full parking plan and the needs and the build-out of what we expect the full need on the Ross side will be part of that February, January, early 2024 package that is the next step in this process. Um, we're not there yet. We're still being um very cognizant of what may come, what is on the table, and um going through those plans right now and figuring out exactly the full uh parking need over there. But we fully expect um the parking to be laid out in very clear detail, obviously, because we have to fund it um in the first quarter of 2024.
Okay, that's fair enough. I know we're, we're here on this LDA in this particular site on this, but it also, as a proactive approach, is to look at what we're going to possibly be for infrastructure for parking garage purposes. So that looks like a good number. What is the existing parking garage and how many um spaces do we have in the existing one um right by the Nova Suites? What do we have?
715.
715? So we're, it'll be a little bit more and bigger than the existing one. And it will possibly be shared parking, is that correct? Like this one we have?
All those details, I mean, we're happy to get into that, Counselor.
Yep.
Um, you know, again, we're, we're here for the, setting the framework of the real estate. Um, those details on how the parking works out, but yeah, I mean, obviously, it'll be shared parking.
Okay.
Um, and there will be a public component to, to everything that we do, but those details, that's, that's exactly what um the minds in the planning department and the consulting groups and our full downtown team, that's what they're working through right now.
This LDA gets in place, it's a, put it in motion for the garage? Is that, is that hand-in-hand?
Correct. It, 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 quite frankly, it gives the proponent uh the ability to move forward with the specialty grocer with the, in a, in some concrete way. Um, and it gives us the ability to, now that we have the site laid out specifically, um, the agreement's in place for us to get the rest of the work done in a certain amount of timeframe. It creates the framework for the much larger component of this, which is obviously going to be the appropriation request through the DIF, through state and federal sources, whatever is developed, um, that actually finances the, the public end of the project. But for our purposes here tonight, it, it, it gives the proponent uh the ability to move forward with what uh he and his firm need to do, and it gives the planning department and our folks the ability to know exactly what's laid out in front of us and the ability to move forward and, and be back before this body uh within a couple of months.
Okay, and last question I'll ask, Mr. Walker. Um, I know this site's going to be where kind of the existing ice skating rink, which is there right now. Uh, can we find, uh, if we possibly can find another spot for that? It's very, very popular here in the city. It's brought a lot of folks out. We, we use it quite a bit, um, couple nights a week.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman, the mayor's already thinking about it. So, yeah, we know that this site uh is probably not going to be, it's not going to be long-term. I, probably not even next year, so we need to find another site for that, but uh the mayor's committed to bringing it back next year.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you, Counselor. Any other coun- uh, go to Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm, thank you for the presentation. Um, this is a cool project, 325 units, uh, 20,000 square feet of gross retail. Um, I'm curious about the garage, too. So what's your anticipation for needs for commitment from the city for parking spaces with those 325 units?
Uh, we'll need, based on our experience at the Abbey, which we've been tracking that pretty close, would be right around 300 spaces.
Okay.
That leaves a surplus of about 500.
Okay. What's the, um, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Walker, what's the committed number of spaces to the apartments uh in, around downtown for the municipal garage in Kilroy Square?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just doing the math off the top of my head, if the folks in planning have that off the top of their head, feel free to jump in, but I would say of the 700, um, two, 250 to, 250-ish in, in Kilroya, dedicated to the two.
Out of the 730?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And um, do we have, uh, do we have utilization numbers?
We sure do.
Yeah.
We can, we can provide those.
Love to see that. And what, just because I, I understand the pertinence of this proposal tonight and what it's necessary for, for purposes of securing the specialty uh grocer, but what are uh garages going for these days?
Based on past experience, um, you know, the, the hard construction of the last garage that we did, which is going to be, um, you know, this one might be a little bit bigger, um, that was $46 million. So, you know, you're, you're talking a substantial uh public investment.
Yep. That's fine. Um, just want to understand what we're, what we're, I mean, I understand the need, and this was always part of the plan. Uh, anyway, just want to understand what we're set up for. But, um, no, this is a cool project that activates a particular area that's been, been dormant for a while, especially with, with residential. Um, so, um, look forward to seeing it come out of the ground. I think I saw a closing date here somewhere around 2025, but you said uh construction might start next summer.
We'll look, look to do it well before that.
Next year, 2024, right?
Well before that, if we can.
Okay, all right. That's, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Devine.
Uh, thank you very much for your presentation. Great job. Um, I see you, you have about 22,000 square feet of courtyard in the project? The two rooftops and then the, the on top of the garage?
I'll, I'll, I'll accept your math on that because I don't know the number off the top.
Yeah, but it's pretty, they're pretty big. They're nice. I mean, for your apart, for the apartments that are going to be in there. On the rendition, I see that there's um trees. Uh, are those going to be most likely potted trees, or is there going to be actually grass and stuff up there? Just because there's a lot of area and uh we, as a city, we, we do an amazing job with trees. We, you know, we spend a lot of money putting trees in and, you know, we'll, I'm sure we're going to be the ones putting them in on the sidewalks. But uh I was just really curious as to what, if there was a, a master plan on what you're going to have for green space on those courtyards?
Yeah, so, so right now, we're showing it in concept level, but we've, we have good experience in building those court, courtyards. I know uh up at the Abbey with our courtyard, so we actually do have some pretty large trees, um, as well as we have some, you know, areas with different types of landscaping, some grass. We, we would expect it on that courtyard as well to have an area for a, a dog park.
Oh, nice.
Dogs are very popular uh in this development, so we like to make sure we have accommodations on-site, minimize our activity off-site. So we expect we have all those elements.
It'd be nice to see that, you know, when the renditions are done, you know, a lot of times they change. And uh so just, I'd love to see trees and whatever type of green space you can, that you want to put in, but I'd, I'd like it, you know, it's a, it's a, we're a city and, you know, we put trees in to reduce carbon and, and temperature and things like that. So anything you guys can do there would be great. But it's an awesome project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Well said over here. DJ, just a couple of comments. It's great for us, Atlantic Realty. I, you, you know, you folks have been right in the middle of everything here. Um, over the past uh five or six years here now, we've turned a corner up at North Quincy. We've definitely turned a corner more than the corner downtown, and, and this is just another piece we all knew that was coming this way, and it's, it's great that um there's a grocer involved, and uh great that you folks are, you know, involved all the time at 200% effort. Uh, it just will, uh, as we move forward with a few other things in the downtown, it'll uh really, really finish things off in the next few years, so appreciate it. I don't think we have any other questions. We're going to leave this right in uh committee until Monday night. We'll pull it out Monday night and um uh deal with it then, but um. But with that, I think we're all set here. So I'll close the ordinance committee meeting at 8:17. Thank you.